We will now call our July the 20th School Board Work Session to Order. And as we call our meeting to order tonight, we are thankful for those who are here to be a part of what we're doing, and we are excited about the opportunity to serve. The agenda members of the board featured in board docs has been before you, and at this time, the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion to approve our agenda for tonight's July the 20th work session.
A move that we approve the agenda for tonight, July the 20th.
Vice Chair made a motion to approve the agenda, seconded by Mrs. Morrison. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Scoop up, my Matt Trost.
Here.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, this has been an incredible day. So much history has happened here on the planet and beyond the planet, so we would now like to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Blessings continue upon our great nation. All right, we're going to move through our agenda as we have it. I do want to acknowledge that the VSBA Conference on Education was incredible today, and our governor indicated today that he believes that there is power in every child, and we are grateful for the opportunity to help discover that and to inspire people to work together for that cause. Having said that, our board is so organized with various individuals who share responsibilities, and we'll be discussing that a little later for this current school year. But for matters of protocol, Section C of our agenda tonight calls for a review of any reports that may be necessary for this group to hear tonight, and so, C1 Finance Committee, Mr. Harvey.
No report.
C2 Governor's School Committee, Mr. Harvey.
No report.
C3 Law Regional School Committee, Dr. Carter.
No report at this time. Our next meeting is August the 25th at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, as well, Mr. Harvey. C4 STEM Academy, Dr. Nillis.
No report.
And Legislative Advocacy Committee, there would be no report unless there's a board member that has something to share regarding that. We'll now move to Section D of our agenda, and I would like for Dr. Edwards, there's no policies for review tonight, but Dr. Edwards just make a statement so that board members can understand this section of our work session agenda.
Yes, so, welcome to the new school year. So what we're going to be doing is bringing any policies that are for first reading and review to the board during work sessions. We just don't happen to have any for tonight's meeting, but I did want to have that there so that you could see where it would be. We would have a discussion, admin would review the changes, whether those are VSBA changes or LCS changes, or simply the policy is about three to five years old and it's time just to put our eyes on it one more time. So, on the work session agendas, going forward, you will see a school board policy discussion. If there are none, we'll just indicate.
None for review?
As like today. Oh, and second reading will be on the business meeting that we have following the work session. So they won't, the approval will actually be during the business meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Edwards. That now moves us to Section E for tonight's work session, and according to what I have, we have 12 items under our Section E, and we'll ask each board member to govern yourself accordingly as we move through those items. In Section E, some of those will deal with us engaging in the process of electing individuals to serve from the board for various capacities, and when that comes up, I do want to review that we wanted to make sure this year, with the arrival of our newest board member, Mr. Trost, that we devised a plan where every board member would have an opportunity to express his or her interest in serving in our opportunities for service. Of course, all board members are a part of our discipline committee, but as it relates to school board committees, regional school governing boards, and liaisons for our community groups, we want to thank each board member for your submissions, and we looked at what was ranked as the instructions indicated on the information sheets, as well as who placed a mark to indicate the areas of interest, and as has been board protocol in the past, we recognize seniority as a part of this process. And so tonight, I'm thankful to the vice chair, along with myself, for looking at these, and we're bringing to you tonight recommendations for your consideration. Of course, it's the board's decision, and so that brings us to E1, and that is pertaining to the notion of the election of a school board representative for the law school board. As is stated for the public, each school year, the school board elects a school board member to represent Lynchburg City Schools on the law school board, which is regional. In addition, the school board will elect an alternate member to represent the school division as necessary, and our clerk, I believe, disseminated a sheet to each of you for your review for purposes of discussion as we deal with each item, and tonight, we are bringing before the board for your consideration, and the chair would love to entertain a motion with the consideration of Dr. Sharon Carter, serving as the representative to the law regional school board, and Ms. Susan Morrison as the alternate. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
Been moved by Dr. Gupta.
I would second.
Seconded by Dr. Brennan relative to these names. There are no further discussion or questions at this time. I'm going to ask for the clerk, with any of these, if you vote yes, you're in favor of the recommendations; if you vote no, that would state the same. Madam Clerk?
Scoop up, my Matt Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That now moves us to E2, and under E2, the board typically has a representative on the Central Virginia Governor's School, which we do for science and technology, and the alternate is also designated, and so this is for the board's consideration for our Central Virginia Governor's School, and with the process that we shared, we are bringing before you for your consideration, a tool Gupta as the representative from the board, and Gary Harvey as the alternate. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm going to have approval for the Central Virginia Governor's School representative.
Ms. Morrison has made the motion, is there?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Trost. Any further questions or discussion? Then we were asked in like manner, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Scoop up, my Matt Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to E3, and E3 calls for the similar process for the election of a rep for our Governor's Regional STEM Academy and an alternate, and chair would entertain a motion with the consideration of Michael Nillis as the rep and Sharon Carter as the alternate. What is the pleasure of the board? Motion from Dr. Gupta?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Senhai. Any further questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Scoop up, my Matt Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
That now brings us to E4, and E4 is calling us to our school board committee, the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, and typically, and I just simply use that because that is what we typically do, we have three persons on these committees and one alternate, and for Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations, chair would like to offer these names for your consideration, Kim Senhai, Gary Harvey, Randy Trost, and alternate Bob Brennan. Chair would entertain a motion or the discussion regarding this. Dr. Gupta makes the motion.
Second.
Dr. Carter, it's a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Scoop up, my Matt Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we're now at E5, in like manner for the second of our third committee, two of which need members, in this way is the Finance and Facilities Committee, and I do want to acknowledge that that is the appropriate title for the committee, and the recommendations are Mike Nillis, Mike Nillis, Susan Morrison, Bob Brennan, and alternate Gary Harvey, and I must admit, this is a very popular committee amongst this board. We now bring this to your consideration at this time.
Make a motion be approved.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Scoop up, my Mr. Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and board, and we are going to now, before we deal with these liaison groups, the agenda calls for Item 6, which is the Virginia Education Foundation Donation, and this was before us, I believe, in our last meeting, and it's coming before us tonight, and as it is coming for us, it is coming by way of action, so I'm going to ask Dr. Edwards to please cue us up on this matter.
Certainly. As you mentioned, we brought this to you last meeting with the Virginia Education Foundation wishing to donate several thousand books to us, value about 330,000, a little bit over that, which the board would have to approve. There were some questions about the book titles, and I have sent those to the board for review, so fortunately, it wasn't 22,000 titles, it was several titles multiple times that you had an opportunity to review. There were also some questions about the in-kind donation at a dollar a book for the shipping and storage on our end. Dr. Jordan is also here to answer any additional questions that the board may have after reviewing titles and figures.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Dr. Jordan.
Good evening, board. Do you all have any questions? And you will notice when Deputy Superintendent Pugh talked to you last meeting, which was just a week ago, the numbers were lower, the longer the pallets sit there, I think we're up about 600 more books, so we're at 23,113 as the total, so over 23,000 titles or copies.
All right, members of the board, this is coming for action tonight unless someone considers to delay it further, and so they know their questions. Ms. Morrison?
I can't see Dr. Jordan. Dr. Jordan, I looked over the list, and I did not recognize a lot of them. Do you feel like that these books support our desire for equity and sensitivity for students? I only saw one book in a different language, and that was, I think I was right on that. One book was in Spanish, one book title.
I think that they are not classics, like you notice A Wrinkle in Time may be one of the few classics.
Right.
That we see. I don't think that there are many options for books in other languages, but we do have Title III monies where we can provide books in diverse languages if we need to do that, so we could supplement with some Title III monies that are earmarked for home libraries and classroom libraries. We did reach out to a VDOE representative to make sure that CARES funding would be allowable for this, and they got back to us and said absolutely, at-home libraries, classroom libraries, authentic literacy, anything to address achievement gap, opportunity gap is the most important thing that we could do to address instructional needs at this time.
Thank you.
Dr. Nillis?
So how are these books being, like, these are going to students individually for use at home?
I would like, and I'm going to tag Ethel's team as well, I would like to see this be a collaborative effort among a few departments to decide how we distribute these. I think when they come in 14-plus pallets, we will treat them as if we do when we order books for our libraries and media centers to make sure that they are appropriate for K-8 students, and we will decide how to distribute the books. I think we could do it at some of our community events. We could, this year, we made sure that grades three, four, and five all took books home, but they had instructional materials to go with them. So third grade this past year had a book about math in the real world, because math is really hard to conceptualize if you're not understanding that math is all around you, so we did a math in the real world book. We did a science book for students. We did a book that went along with the history of the city of Lynchburg and weather, so I think we have some options for not just sending books home, but helping parents and community members understand what our literacy mission is and things that we're doing in the classroom with the new K-5 literacy materials through Wilson Language, our support that we're offering in many classrooms using Orton Gillingham, which is a multi- which is a multi-sensory literacy approach. We can couple many, many things that we're doing in the classroom. Also, at home, there are some simple strategies that I think parents and community members would really appreciate.
Well, my question really is on what we're going to do with these particular books. You've mentioned K through eight. There's, I'd say, a fair number of titles that look to be targeted or more appropriate for high school. And there's a couple that, when you get into the reviews, are like, well, there's some heavy subjects here. And, you know, if parents want to let the students read that, that's fine. But there needs to be, I guess, full disclosure in terms of. And that was by far the exception. You know, there were only a few books that I looked at that were like, yeah, you might not want to think about those ones. Most of them are certainly middle school and some elementary. But I'm just wondering how you're going to go through and control that or sort it, because these aren't just all K through eight books.
Right. And, you know, off the top of my head, I think that we should give parents a heads-up that books are coming home and what we expect or what we would like to see from the books. But also say, if they're, you know, parents should have the right to censor any material that's coming into their home. So if parents have concerns, we would definitely want to hear about those. But I hope that we look through them like we would anything that goes into classroom libraries and our media centers.
Yeah, I'd like to see that done before the books go home with the kids.
Absolutely.
And parents get a bit of a surprise.
I agree. I thought about that a little over.
And like I say, that's by far, in a way, that's, there's only a few where I think you might need to, you know, be careful about these. The rest look to be pretty appropriate, age-appropriate, so.
Dr. Jordan, I'd looked at the titles as well. I'd say maybe seventy-five percent. And I went online to kind of get the reviews for that many of those books. And I thought, I felt comfortable with the titles of the seventy-five percent or so that I looked at. I'm getting back to the strings attached or stipulations attached with accepting the donations. I recognize that we want to give them away to the children, which I think is fantastic. I guess I'm a little hung up on the twenty-three thousand or so dollars that we're having to pay for them. Is there any stipulation that would prevent us from taking a subset of these books and maybe making it into a project? We could have some children that would want to sell them online. Certainly, I have children and they, my kids sell things online. And maybe make an entrepreneurial, maybe entrepreneurial club or something and let them take a couple thousand of these books and try to get them sold at maybe a fraction of their retail value. I mean, is there, is there any kind of stipulation as to what we have to do with the books?
All right, thank you, Mr. Trost. If, Dr. Edwards or Ms. Laconis, if someone could take a step at that?
Yeah, I think because we are accepting them as a donation, we might be on sticky ground to turn around and now sell the books if we've accepted them under terms of they're being donated to us. But I would have to check with Attorney Towns to just make sure that there are no legal stipulations behind that.
I'm just trying to think of some way to recoup a little bit of money, recognizing they were getting CARES money, you know, whatever. But I think it'd be an opportunity to teach some children how to be entrepreneurs with no overhead. But that's the only question I have.
And that kind of process of matching funds or in-kind donation is very common. And actually, it's common, and even when we receive our budget from the state, you know, to accept these funds, we must also match with these funds. You'll see that sometimes with grants. So that topic of having to match or having to do some sort of in-kind supplement is going to come up frequently as we do the business of the board. So it's, I didn't find this one to be that uncommon when it comes to a donation such as this mass, you know, three, all the books that we're getting over.
I guess fundamentally, I just have a problem with someone saying they're giving us something, but yet it's costing us. Just fundamental issue with myself.
I hear you.
So noted, Mr. Trost. Any other questions, or Mr. Harvey?
Dr. Jordan, I'd like to thank you and your team for not only securing this, but also for, you know, taking a look at some of the titles and sharing that with us. When I, I kind of did the same thing. I took the list and just kind of Googled. And what I was going to suggest is, a lot of them that I saw did have a little summary, a little bit of a narrative. And that might be something that we can provide parents ahead of time to address some of the concerns that Dr. Nillis was speaking about. But I was encouraged by a good many of the books that I saw. So thank you again for bringing this to us.
Thank you. You all have good ideas. I'd love to brainstorm with you at some point because the entrepreneur made me think of, could these turn into little libraries? Or could they turn into something in the community? So I think there are lots of opportunities that we have with twenty-three thousand books. We have to have an intentional strategy for these. So I appreciate you looking at the titles. I like the idea of sharing, once we figure out the grade levels that the books are associated with, sharing grade level summaries or lists.
Further questions on this matter? Every question and concern is important. And I'm not hearing any challenges from the finance team. So obviously, the allocation for this donation fits within what we are capable of doing. There is a request that this matter tonight be an action item and that the School Board would accept the donation from the Virginia Education Foundation. Is there a motion to that end?
I move that we accept the donation from the Virginia Education Foundation.
Dr. Carter has made the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Seconded by Dr. Gupta. Any further questions or discussion on the matter? Any further statements by the maker of the motion or the second? Then, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll. If you're voting yes, you are in favor of accepting the donation of the books from the Virginia Education Foundation and the subsequent dynamics that go along with it as stated. And if you vote no, then you would be against it. Madam Clerk?
Scoop up, Madam Trost?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Dr. Jordan, Dr. Edwards, and the Virginia Education Foundation. That now moves us to Item E eight, E seven, rather, E seven, for our Education Foundation. And for this, we have developed liaisons to our community groups. And the Education Foundation is one of those. And the board has had two persons to serve to represent us and bring back information. And so as it relates to the Education Foundation, we would like to ask the board's consideration for School Board members, Dr. Kim Senha and Mr. Randall Trost. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to, sorry, go ahead.
Been moved by Dr. Gupta?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Madam Trost?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. That now moves us to E eight, which is in regards to the Beacon of Hope and two representatives as well for the board to elect. And we would like to bring for your consideration for Beacon of Hope, Dr. Michael Nillis and Dr. Kim Senha. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dr. Nillis and Dr. Senha for the representatives for the Beacon of Hope.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Trost. Motion made by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Madam Trost?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, E nine is in relationship to Partners in Education. And we would like to consider, the board to consider the recommendations for election for our reps of Partners in Education, Dr. Bob Brennan and Mr. Gary Harvey. What is the pleasure of the board? I'm sorry, Mr. Harvey?
I wish to remove my name from the list. I've served with Partners in Education for over thirty years from the business community. And I will be maintaining that position from the business side. So I would like to have that opportunity extended to another colleague on the board to also serve with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. And we certainly have been appreciative of your service on that. And as a business person, you'll still be in that anyway.
Oh, yes.
So your point, and so we have Dr. Bob Brennan. And there would be a need for a second. And the Chair would certainly be willing to entertain any volunteer that would like to offer his or her service in that capacity. I'm looking to my left and I'm looking to my right.
I suggest we move forward with one and while it was needed later on.
Thank you so much. Dr. Nillis is suggesting that we move on with the said name of Dr. Bob Brennan. And if necessary, come back later and revisit the second person. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to.
All right, then moved by Dr. Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Morrison, that Bob Brennan be our representative to Partners in Education. Any questions or discussion further? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Madam Trost?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And E ten, which will conclude all of these appointments or election to board members, is in regards to the Education Task Force. And I do want to acknowledge that Ms. Susan Morrison and Dr. Gupta have served on that since the inception of that group and have ably served in that capacity. Ms. Morrison did inform the Chair and the Vice Chair that she did not desire to serve in that capacity this year. And that is the only reason why her name is not mentioned there. Therefore, my humble name is there along with Atul Gupta for the reasons why Ms. Morrison was on the committee. But I will gladly step aside if it becomes a matter of concern for the board. What is your pleasure?
I move. Make the motion, please.
All right, Ms. Morrison has made a motion, seconded by Dr. Carter, that the representatives to the task force would be James Coleman and Atul Gupta. Dr. Nillis, is it okay for me to carry this motion with my name listed?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I just want to make sure.
You can nominate yourself and we won't let you vote for yourself.
All right, then no further questions or discussion. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Trost?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Madam Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you, board members. We tried to be fair and utilize the best wisdom for us to be a team. Thank everybody for your service. And we'll move forward and get the work done for Lynchburg City Schools as we work with our superintendent. Next item is the long-anticipated E eleven, our Youth Risk Behavior Survey for 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. So our School Health Advisory Committee, which meets all year and is a collaboration between school administrators and community members, is here tonight to go over the school, I'm sorry, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So I will turn it over to Ms. Sherri Brown, who is a supervisor in the Student Services Department. She will introduce all of our guests. And let me just offer an apology to our guests. Normally, I try to pull this so that it's one of the first items on the agenda so that you can present and get home to your families. That was on me. So please accept my apology. But we are excited to hear what you all are going to share with us tonight. Ms. Brown?
Well, good evening, board. Lynchburg City Schools, in collaboration with the Lynchburg School Health Advisory Committee and Central Virginia Addiction and Recovery Resources, otherwise known as CVAR, were responsible for administering the Lynchburg Youth Risk Behavior Survey in December of 2020 and disseminating the results. You should each have received, we just had these printed, so you should each have a copy, a hard copy of the results. In April of 2021, the School Health Advisory Committee formulated a subcommittee for the specific purposes of reviewing and analyzing the data. For the past three months, the subcommittee has met weekly. And so members of the subcommittee include, and many of them are here today. And so as I read their name, I would ask that they would just stand so that, and be recognized. Other than myself, I'm part of the, the subcommittee and the big committee. We have Andrea Bryant, who is our Nurse Coordinator with Lynchburg City Schools. Januah Davis, who is Program Manager of Prevention and Wellness Services with Horizon Behavioral Health. Callie Miller, who is the CVAR Coalition Coordinator and Drug-Free Communities Project Coordinator with Horizon Behavioral Health in their wellness, in their Prevention and Wellness Services program. She works directly with Januah Davis. Dr. Tanya Price, Assistant Professor of Health Promotion and Master of Public Health with the University of Lynchburg. Ms. Tolles, Faith Tolles, is not here with us today. She's probably listening through YouTube. She's on vacation. But she is the Prevention Education Manager with Freedom 424. But we do have with us tonight Tiana Knight, who is a student intern with Freedom 424 and works directly with Ms. Tolles. And last but not least, our presenter for tonight, Mrs. Kimberly Foster, who is the Population Health Community Coordinator for the Virginia Department of Health, the Central Virginia Health District. So what I'm going to do now, I will turn this over, the presentation, over to Ms. Foster. And she will take it from here.
All right, good evening, board. I'm going to remove my mask here.
You want us to clap?
All right. And.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Before you start, the board wants to clap for you all and just thank you for your service and what you're going to present to us. Go right ahead.
Yes, it's been a great team effort. And as you all can see by what the package you've received and probably what you've reviewed already, that there is a lot of data that is available to us. So what the Advisory Committee kind of did to prepare for this presentation is to take a snapshot of some of the data that we thought might be prevalent for you all. Not to say that the rest of it isn't important or doesn't tag along with what we're going to present. But we could be here for a couple hours if we wanted to present it all. So we didn't think that that would be necessary. So I want to start out a little bit about what is YRBS? So I want to start out a little bit about what is YRBS, and how many of you are familiar with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? Most of you, some of you? Okay, good. So the YRBS is a national school-based survey conducted by the CDC, state, territorial, tribal, and local governments. CDC started this back in 1990. They have a wide variety of resources, of course, if you want to look into it more and compare some of these figures nationally or look at past reports, but it is something that has been going on for quite a while. Nearly all of the U.S. states participate, and the goal is to have a national representation of what our youth are experiencing, what are the trends, what are we seeing as far as health-related behaviors, so that we can look and see what types of interventions might be necessary, or what are we doing that's working really well in our communities to support youth and their health behaviors. So the YRBS aim is to monitor six categories of those behaviors that contribute to the leading causes of death and disability among youth and adults, with the hope that the more interventions we can put into place, the healthier our youth will be as they grow up. The methodology for the survey is pretty simple. It was an online survey of 115 questions, and this past year, it was administered to the Lynchburg students, Lynchburg City School students through Google Forms. We had a, you know, of course, a little bit of a difference this year with it being COVID and the children being educated virtually. So as in past years, the school received passive permission by the parents, meaning that if they did not want their student to participate, then they would decline permission. And it was administered to eighth, 10th, and 12th grade students. So we had about 50% of the enrolled students respond to the survey. We had 913 responses, and you can see the breakdown on that slide based on eighth, 10th, and 12th graders. The themes that we're going to discuss tonight are physical health and extracurricular activities, relationships and social supports, violence and safety, mental health, and substance use. And a couple things to remember before we get into the data, remember, these are self-reported behaviors. So, you know, there's always some hesitancy when it comes to self-reported data, because of course, kids can, you know, mark anything, but what we've, you know, what has been found over the course of the years is that it still gives us a good snapshot of what youth are experiencing, and it gives us that comparable data from years that the surveys have been administered, as well as comparing to Virginia and national averages. So what you'll see as I go through the data is the highlights that we decided on these topics, and whether that be, you know, in a positive light, being that, you know, our youth in our community are maybe not experiencing certain things as heavily as others in Virginia nationally, or where there may be opportunities for us to say, hey, maybe we need to, as a community, look at what we could do to intervene here and make some changes moving forward. So my job tonight is really to just present the data to you all. We're not here to talk about, you know, what we've been doing as a community, what we can do, what we should do, but to really present the data so that you guys can absorb it, the community partners can look at it and absorb it, and then decide, you know, how to move forward with that. So the first section is physical health and extracurricular activities, and one of the things we thought it was worthy to point out is youth who described themselves as overweight, because we had approximately 29% of youth in all, over all grades, describing themselves as overweight, and we saw a 4% increase in negative body image from when this survey was taken in 2018. So something to think about. It is still slightly lower than the Virginia national average, but is still something to consider. Youth who reported not being physically active for at least 60 minutes per day, at least one day in the past week, was pretty high. Granted, I do want to mention again that this was taken in a COVID year, so there weren't as much opportunities for kids to get out and be active and be in the activities they're used to being in. So we want to make note of that. But approximately 28% of respondents in all grades report, reported that they had no days of physical activity, and that was an increase of 5% from 2018. And then youth who reported spending three-plus hours on a school day playing video or computer games or using a computer for something besides school, which we all know, you know, has been something that has been an issue with the more phones, computers, and texting and on all of that, those different types of uses that we have now. But 55% of respondents did report spending three-plus hours. And again, considering lack of physical activity, that may be higher in this year because they didn't have as much to do outside of their schoolwork. And then we're going to move on to relationships and social supports. And this first graph here tells a couple different stories, but the first thing we wanted to point out is the social media and threats intimidation. So approximately 25% of youth reported receiving threats and intimidation through social media, texting, or online in some form or fashion. The other part of that breaks that down and asks about sexting and inappropriate communication. And we saw that 40% of 12th graders had received sexually inappropriate messages, and that number of receive, we wanted to point out, is, was higher than what was sent, meaning, indicating that students are forwarding images, you know, to multiple people perhaps, and, you know, increasing those numbers. We didn't have any comparable numbers for the national or state in these areas. The next data points talk about bullying and bystanders with, and you can see the figures there, for the numbers that reported in each grade that they had been bullied, which is around 45% reported that they had been bullied, and 50% reporting being a bystander to bullying behaviors. So there, you know, they actually saw that going on. We see a lower report when we ask youth if they had bullied someone, we see lower percentages there. So either they're not disclosing that perhaps, or, you know, there's multiple victims maybe being bullied by one person. And then when talking to, or when asking youth about how often they had been bullied, we found 12.4% of all respondents reported being bullied daily or several times a day, and that eighth graders were, most often, reported the daily bullying. When it comes to missing school because of fear of bullying, 11% of respondents reported missing one or more days of school, and we do want to note that the vast majority of students are not missing multiple days due to fear of bullying, but, you know, 11% is not insignificant number for students missing one day as well. There was also a question asking students how they identified as far as their sexual orientation, and approximately 25% of youth across all grade levels identify as other than heterosexual. So that is just something to be mindful of in working with and interacting with youth in our community and how we tailor some of our messaging and programming. When asked about the number of sexual partners, we did find that Lynchburg youth reported higher than the Virginia national averages, at least for 10th and 12th grade. We didn't have those comparable figures for eighth. And you can see the data there. In the 12th grade, about 30% reported having had four or more partners. But then when they were asked on the next slide, you'll see about their birth control usage, Lynchburg youth report using birth control more often than Virginia national rates. So, and that is a considerable difference if you look at those comparisons between Virginia and the national rates. So they are, for the most part, using some form of birth control. When asked about intimate partner violence, and the question was how many times did someone you were dating or going out with physically hurt you on purpose, Lynchburg youth are experiencing lower rates than the Virginia national average. So hopefully getting some of those messages across about healthy relationships. In the area of social supports, there were three different components, and they're all shown here on this one slide, but in all areas, extracurricular opportunities, schools giving positive feedback, and having older adults that support them, we found that youth really feel supported in all three of those areas. So those percentages were very high, and that's very important in trying to move forward any type of interventions or programs in our community. We had some questions about violence and safety. That's our next topic. And when asked about how many days did you carry a weapon to school during the last 30 days, that was below the national average in all grades except eighth. So it's maybe important to note that these younger children may be, maybe they're doing these things younger than what they did in past years. We asked about, when asked about physical fighting, you can see despite a high rate of physical fights among eighth grades, numbers decrease in the higher grades. So again, kind of showing that junior high eighth grade year and the fighting and weapon tendencies there. And on a positive note, the youth are reporting that they're not engaging in multiple fights. And that's not a graph I have there, but it is on, it is in your report. Kind of looking at some things that our youth are experiencing, maybe in their home life, we were asking about victims of domestic violence, and a total of 14.9% of respondents reported having been physically harmed by a family or household member. And 11% of students reported being a witness to domestic violence in their home four or more times. When asked about gang awareness, it is shown there as grade levels increase, the reported awareness of gang activity in school also increases. So that doesn't necessarily, you know, necessarily mean anything about the involvement. It's just showing that at least, you know, youth are aware of what's going on around them. And also, when you look at the numbers that are shown on that graph as well, of those that had been approached by a gang member or that type of thing, those numbers are fairly low. And our next topic is mental health, and I know I'm rolling by this quickly, but it's a lot of information, so we'll leave time for questions here at the end. Students were asked about feelings of, feeling sad and hopeless. And they were asked, did you ever feel sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing some usual activities? And what we're seeing is over the past five years, there is an increasing trend of feeling of sadness and hopelessness among high school students. And you can see the comparisons from 2015 up to 2020. Again, you know, and I hate to keep mentioning it, but it was a COVID year, so everything is going to be a little different, and that, you know, I think as a nation, we were experiencing a lot of feelings of sadness and hopelessness, but it doesn't take away the fact that it's something that we need to look at in our youth. Youth were asked if they had ever considered, planned, or attempted suicide in the past year, and that's our next slide. 16.1% of youth reported that they had considered suicide. 12.5 had made a plan to die by suicide, and 7.4 had attempted suicide. And substance abuse? When asked if they had been given, offered, or sold illegal drugs, eighth and 10th graders reported, the question we highlighted here was where they accessed their drugs, if they were wanting to get them, and the eighth and 10th graders access drugs at school while 12th graders access drugs in their communities. And I do want to mention that the vast majority of youth reported never having tried illicit drugs, which was 98.3 across all grades. And a number of students did report using illicit drugs as many as 40 or more times in their lifetime. So there's a vast majority that have never used illicit drugs, but those that are or have tried them seem to have used them multiple times. The marijuana usage or rates for our youth are lower than Virginia and national averages by quite a bit, or national rates by quite a bit. And this will be something I think we need to kind of keep an eye on with the changes in the legislation, and just to see how that may or may not affect these numbers moving forward. When it comes to alcohol usage, fewer Lynchburg youth report having their first drink before age 11 to 13 compared to Virginia and national data, and you can see those comparisons there. But we do want to note that 9.2% of eighth graders reported that they had a drink before the age of 11. So eighth graders were asked before age 11, and the 10th and 12th question was before the age of 13. When it comes to whether parents or friends think that drinking is wrong, our youth report, the majority of youth report that their parents and friends would think it is wrong for them to drink alcohol. This kind of coincides with some of that data that was presented before about youth feeling supported by their parents, by their school, and through their, their community activities and extracurricular activities. Youth that smoked cigarettes in the past month, those rates are lower as well than Virginia and national average. and national average, averages, and you can see those comparisons too. So a significant difference there than our Virginia and national counterparts, comparisons, sorry. Vaping as well, we see the same thing. Rates are lower than Virginia and national average. Of course, you know, those rates increasing as the students get older, have more access to the vaping products, but we are still seeing that it is, is lower, especially than those national rates that are shown there. So our next slide, what we wanted to do is just give a little overview of where are, what we called strengths and wins are with this data, you know? What are we looking at that our youth are, as far as our youth reporting, that is looking good for our youth and our community? And the respondents perceive that strong parent, teacher, community, and social support. We saw that in the areas of reducing violence, increasing safety, providing extracurricular activities and community programs that support physical activity in the Lynchburg area. Overall, we have a low rate of inner partner violence in Lynchburg youth. The vast majority of youth are not missing multiple days of school due to fear of bullying. Most youth reported that parents and friends think it's wrong to smoke cigarettes and to drink alcohol. And lower percentage of 10th and 12th graders who reported drinking in the past month. Also, a vast majority of Lynchburg youth reported never trying illicit drugs, as I mentioned before. That was a pretty high percentage. Some of our opportunities for growth, just in summary, and I mentioned a couple of these as we went through. We have a lot of community engagement events, so continuing those, providing those activities to promote, to promote physical activity, keeping the kids busy, whether it be, you know, sports, physicals, or whatever we can get them engaged in to decrease their risky behavior. Although the vast majority of youth are not missing multiple days of school due to fear of bullying, which we did mention as a strength, 11% is not an insignificant number for youth missing one day. We have opportunity to partner with nonprofit, community, and faith-based organizations to address the physical, physical safety, violence reduction, multiple sexual partner risks, birth control use exploitation, social media, and online safety. There's a lot of supports in our community to partner with to assist in those areas. Increased education on positive relationships, empathy, and mentoring could be an opportunity for growth. Increasing trend in Lynchburg youth reporting decline in mental health and an increase in reports of attempted suicide the past 12 months is something that we should look at community-wide for considerations on how to help with those mental health issues. And the need to address the ease of access to drugs for older youth in the community and the younger youth in the school environment could be opportunities for growth as well. As I mentioned, there are a lot of partner organizations, and we didn't want to mention the organizations by name, but just kind of provided a list of community partners that work to improve the health and well-being of youth. We also have a community health improvement plan that supports implementing programs to improve community health outcomes throughout our community. And Sheri already mentioned the members of the school health advisory committee that worked so hard to bring you these data points and gather the data together and the report for you. Do you all have any questions? I know that's a lot.
All right, board, the floor is open for meaningful questions and statements around this very nicely done and well-presented report. Members of the board. Dr. Gupta.
Thank you very much for an excellent presentation. I know you have a very strong team, and I know having Dr. Price on the team makes it much more vibrant and strong. So looking at the data, knowing that your eighth graders, there were 40 more African-American respondents compared to 10th and 12th graders. You guys delve into subgroup analysis based on demographics or social variables?
Does anybody want to address that besides me?
Just out of curiosity, so I'm not trying to...
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted to see if a member of the team would like to address that instead of me.
Good evening. Jan Davis with Horizon Behavioral Health. We have not dug any deeper in looking at specific demographics and comparing demographic information to specific questions related to the survey. However, if there's something that is of concern, we can certainly look into that more. Of course, we'd have to find the funding to be able to do that, but definitely that is a possibility.
Because I was specifically looking at that hopelessness variable, and there's a 1% increase across eighth grade, 10th graders, 12th graders, but the data was sort of skewed in terms of eighth grader respondents, you know, one particular demographic variable. So that's what intrigued me to see what's driving that percent. You know, is that skewness across the board, or is it skewness just, you know, in one demographic?
Sure.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, we can definitely take a further look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any other, Mr. Harvey?
I found, I also appreciate everyone on the team. This is a lot of really great data for us to use. I was really pleased to see some of the results regarding substance abuse, et cetera, within our schools that seems to be on the decline, which is a positive thing, including smoking, drinking, and vaping. One piece that really stuck out for me was the amount of screen time young people are starting to see, three-plus hours a day outside of school activity. And I just wanted to ask if you have an opinion regarding the increase in the amount of screen time versus the decrease in physical health quality and also mental health quality? Is there any, can there be any association between, I mean, obviously if somebody's on a computer versus out, you know, playing football or something, they're going to, of course, have less physical activity, but there just seems to be also a connection with mental health as well.
I'm Dr. Tanya Price from University of Lynchburg. To answer your question, yes, I would say there is a connection between increased decline in mental health and increased access or increased time spent on a device. I think one thing we tried to keep in mind in looking at any of this data is that it's a function of the time in which the data was collected, which is a function of COVID-19. The data that we were connecting or making comparison with is data collected at a time in which a pandemic was not occurring. Therefore, to make a direct correlation or trend analysis is very difficult. Now, from a separate, outside of the data perspective, yes, there is a wide body of data about exercise as medicine, and the mentality that exercise is a great way to address issues of mental health. So I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to, as we develop interventions across the community, to look at synergy between interventions hitting more than one health area. And I think exercise, physical fitness, mental health is an excellent example of that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Anyone else? Dr. Brennan.
Thank you again for the work and the effort and the information. It's very valuable. I feel a little bit sad and hopeless regarding the number of students that also feel sad and hopeless. It's really a shame, and as you say, I'm sure some of that is COVID, but obviously a lot of that is what we need to do in our schools and our community to help with that. I have one question for you and one question for the administration. Do you think the, I was encouraged by the social support as far as family, teachers, and other areas. Is there a comparison to previous years? Is that similar to what we've seen in the past? And then my question to the administration was, I think that the, and Dr. Edwards helped me, wasn't Gaggle supposed to help us some with screening, some of these issues as far as bullying? Can we get any input as far as whether that has any impact on this?
Certainly, Dr. Brown, Director Brown is here and can speak to Gaggle.
Yes, the Gaggle Safety Management System help us streamline any acts of violence, weapons, bullying, harassment, or intimidation that comes across our technology. Within that, the administrative team is alerted immediately, and if anyone is in imminent threat, then central office staff is notified immediately as well. So the Gaggle system as a whole helps us to help the students immediately intercept any type of harassment or intimidation or bullying, and it allows us to quickly interact with that student and get them help, assistance, redirection, and also work with that parent or guardian of that student. So when we're looking at the trends here in terms of the bullying, we still have a lot of work to do, as these results are showing us. When we're looking at it, we know that it was a COVID year. We know that a lot of technology was used, and so it's working with the other departments within LCS and also with our community stakeholders to provide instruction and guidance to the parents and the community at large on appropriate use of technology as a whole, and making sure that not only our students understand, but also the parents and the guardians and our community stakeholders understand how to use technology appropriately, but also, more importantly, defining what is bullying, what is harassment, and what is intimidation, and making sure that they know the meaning and know how it impacts us socially and emotionally as humans.
Director Brown, thank you for that information. Just a follow-up question, which is that, as I recall, the process for Gaggle was, teachers or administration was going to be the person who was going to sort of see, see that activity, and it would drop to different areas. It sounded like a fairly intense process, and I assume it's been in place for about a year or so. I'm not sure how long it's been there, but are there parameters that we're following to see whether that is being helpful or not, either through surveys like this or in some other way?
Yes, so we have data points that we look at, and also this survey, and then also we look at the number of bullying incidents or bullying reports through our discipline crime and violence reports, and also through monthly looking at our behavior audits to look at the number of bullying incidents that might have occurred on a campus or off-campus that's reported to the schools. So yes, we are constantly monitoring.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Very good. Any other pieces? As a, as a follow-up to Dr. Brennan, Director Brown or any of you, and I'm just asking this, I'm not suggesting what our situation is, but of course, across the state and beyond, this whole notion of trafficking is a, is a challenge. Did we hear or see any of, any of that, or how would we know if any of that? Not suggesting that it is, I'm just asking a simple question.
I almost said, "Your Honor," because I'm used to being in a courtroom setting, so forgive me.
Yes, ma'am.
But Freedom 424, like I said, Ms. Toles was representative on our committee, our subcommittee, and that is her area of expertise. And when I brought her in or asked her in to start reviewing this data, the thought was that there may be, we may have some numbers to support that. We do not self-report it as of 2020, December 2020. We do not have that those indications were not illuminated in this survey.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm just very impressed with what this information can, can do for us. And Madam Superintendent, I know that the board will be updated as to how we take this information and utilize it. I'm just very impressed and been thinking through all of it, and we're going to move on in our agenda. But today, it'll take me 45 seconds to put this out, but Anthony Swan, who was the Teacher of the Year, presented today at a conference on education, and he talked about how voices impact kids in ways that we don't even realize. And when I look, Director Reeves and others, of how the community can share in being a voice to help these kids, many of them have moms and dad taking away from them at an early age, and they're hopeless and sad and can't see their way out. And he talked about how he has become who he is because a fourth-grade teacher said, "You, you can do this. You, you know, it's going to be all right." And it was incredibly powerful that people may know what they're doing. "I'm a teacher," or "I'm singing," but when you know why you're doing it and the impact it can have, it can really make a difference on all of these risky behaviors that kids can sometimes get into. And so I'm really interested in how we, as a community, can help be voices alongside of the voices in Lynchburg City Schools to make sure that every child by name and by knee finds the success that they should, should experience. There are no other questions from the board? I think it's appropriate, one more time, to give these wonderful people a dead big hand on a well-picked together report. Thank you so much. You all did a great job.
If I may, Dr. Coleman, I would like to highlight Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Because she joined our team a little bit later. We had, we thought we were going to have another spokesperson from the Virginia Department of Health, but she joined our team and caught, caught up really quickly. And also, Tiana Knight, who is the college intern.
Wow.
She is responsible for creating the simplified PowerPoint that was eye-catching but yet thorough at the same time. So I just wanted to make sure that those two were highlighted because they joined our team a little bit later, but they were very significant in, in our presentation.
Wow, we appreciate that. Dr. Edwards, any further final statements you want to make to them?
Can we add just one more thing? So this survey will live on the United Way's website within the next few weeks. So if any community, community member is interested in accessing this document, please go to the United Way. Additionally, we have about 120 copies of this survey, one for each organization in our community. So if anyone is interested in getting a paper copy of the survey, please reach out to Jan Davis at Horizon Behavioral Health at 434-477-5464. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
Thanks, Jan. I'd just like to say thank you to the team again for fantastic work. What they probably didn't tell you is how many hours they spent poring over this data and really doing an excellent job at the conclusions. The most important part for me was something that you said about the students reporting that they feel supported. And that's the door that we need to continue to do the work that we do. As long as they feel supported by us, they can come to us, they can talk to us, we can work with them and help them, as you said, Dr. Coleman, be that voice for that child and help them move through whatever obstacles they're moving through. I am so encouraged by this data. It's always a little scary when you're trying to be transparent with what's going on with our youth, but you know my saying, "You can't fix what you first don't acknowledge." So we have to acknowledge that there are some things that are going on, the hopelessness, the sadness. We have to acknowledge it first and be transparent and truthful, and then get in there and really help our children. So I'm just proud to work with all these fine people who are, the excellent collaboration between school and community and Department of Health and everybody. It really does take a team to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank each of you, and thank you for being here tonight. This is meaningful information, and you've done an excellent job. Well, members of the board, this brings us to E12, which is the last item under our, for our agenda before information, and I think we can move right through this. This is coming for action and information tonight, and so it's a part of our fiscal responsibility goals. And Dr. Edwards.
Okay, so I will also ask Mr. Gatski to join me, but you remember... But you remember quite some time ago, we were discussing having a facilities study done on all of our buildings in the division and also looking at a couple of the components, a demographic study, which fits in line with attendance zones and looking at our population changes over the last couple of years, and then just taking this information and making recommendations going forward. We did put out an RFP for various organizations to bid, to complete the study for us. We worked in collaboration with the city to put that out. And the results from that RFP are on the agenda tonight. And I'll let Mr. Gatske give you just a brief overview of that process and what we can expect. And we'll take any questions.
Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce myself to our new board member. I'm Steve Gatske, Senior Director for Finance and Operations.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
So, back in the fall, the city requested that we do a facility study. As we got into it, talking with the different stakeholders, there were three areas that people were interested in. One was a facility condition assessment, which tells us the physical condition of our building. The other was a demographic study that would show us attendance zones, where to put future schools, possibly even consolidating schools and everything. That would come out of the demographic study. And then the final component was for a future of education part, something that would maybe show us a path into what education might be in 20 years and how we might get there. We put out an RFP. We had a good response. I believe we had something like 13 or 14 firms respond. We had a committee of evaluators composed by not only school people, but city representatives. And we narrowed that down to three firms and conducted interviews with those three, and then we selected the final. The one we selected was Dominion Seven, who is a local firm located downtown in Lynchburg. So, early on, during...while we were evaluating the proposals from all the firms, the evaluation team was looking at it, and we kind of realized that the budget that was initially given to us by the city was not enough to handle it. So, two things. First of all, we reached an agreement with the city to supplement the original budget from $200,000 to $400,000. But also, then we negotiated with Dominion Seven to arrive at a figure that was somewhere around something that was acceptable to us. In order to do that, we had to kind of trim down part of it, part of the scope. In the FCA, the Facility Condition Assessment, we took out the field work for Heritage High School and Sandusky Middle School. That's not saying we're not going to be looking at them. It just means we don't have to tour through the building. And we also took out Sandusky Elementary because that school, pretty much it's been decided that we're not going to put money into to renovate. That if we need a new school, we would...or need to do anything with Sandusky, we would build a new school. So, we took those three schools out. That saved us a little bit of money. But the biggest change is we took out the future of education or the education planning part. We will, from the demographics, we will have information that will help us in that. But that was the place where we could not only cut some of the costs, but also felt that that might be more appropriate for the Education Task Force and/or would be a third phase or another phase that we could do if needed. So, that's how we arrived. We arrived at a price of $390,000 for the FCA and the demographic study and another $10,000 for consumable items such as copy paper and things like that. So, anyhow, so we are bringing to the board tonight and asking for approval for a contract with Dominion Seven for a total of $400,000. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gatske. You hear the recommendation coming. We first have some discussion. Dr. Brennan?
Mr. Gatske, thanks so much for the presentation. I think you've answered one of my questions, but I hope if you could just help me with this. So, this proposal was put together with the city, city council, in conversation with them and screening the different applicants. And the funding for this is going to be coming from the city? The $400,000 will be coming from the city?
The original 200 that was in the original budget came from the city through...well, actually, it was returned to us through our fund balance. The other $200,000, what we are going to do in the...in our CIP, which is funded by the city, there is a project category, if you want to call it that, of future expenditures or something. It's there. It's a contingency fund. It's there if we have a major problem or issue in one of our buildings. At that, I believe, Kim, was like a little over $1 million. What we're going to do is borrow from that, the $200,000 we need, and then repay it through savings on other projects. We have several projects going on this summer, roof projects. We also have an HVAC project over out at Bass. These...all these projects, we anticipate to come in under budget. And so, we will take those extra funds and reimburse that contingency fund so that we still have that cushion there.
Thank you.
You have a follow-up? You may continue, Dr. Brennan.
Mr. Gatske, one other question. I think I get the idea about the facilities, looking at the buildings. We all understand that's necessary, and I get that picture. Can you go in a little more detail about the demographics part of this project? Exactly what that will be doing? And are we looking at sort of the future of enrollment in the schools? You know, potential for students, why people are leaving or why we're not? Why the enrollment is dropping? Is that going to be included in the demographics piece?
Well, to be truthful, I doubt that you're going to get a lot of answers to the whys. Okay? Because, you know...So, what they will do, they're going to look at the city, first of all, and see where our student population lives currently and where the trends are for where they're moving to, what schools are being...possibly looking at overcrowding or whatever, and what schools are maybe underutilized through the city demographics. And they're going to project out 10 years and 20 years. And then they're going to look at our attendance and our attendance zones. And they will look at are the buildings we have now, even if they're in good condition? Are they in the spot they need to be 20 years from now? And make recommendations along those lines. So, it is a...it'll be a look at the statistics part of it. And then hopefully, they'll be...from that, they'll be able to kind of lay out a path of how we grow or how we progress, put it that way, into the future. But as far as why, you know, they go...you know, people are moving from one side of town to another and whatever. That's a lot of supposition to begin with, and knowing people that do these kind of studies, they don't like to get into that.
So, Dr. Brennan, part of that was done a little bit by the study that Weldon Cooper did when they looked at our enrollment. And I think even when I shared with you all earlier from 2019, if you broke our enrollment down by secondary and elementary and you're really looking at where are the drops, they're in the elementary level. And then specifically looking at kindergartners. And it was something that I talked about when we did the budget presentation about the trend between the affordable housing and families moving, even though they may have had a child here, but before they get to our kindergarten, perhaps they're moving out of the city, which is why our kindergarten enrollment is decreasing if you look at the trends over time. We don't have the actual, "Hey, did we survey every single person who had a baby?" And then, you know, five years later, where are they in terms of kindergarten enrollment? We have not done that, nor do I think Dominion Seven is going to give us that why. So, we will, on our end, continue to look deeply at those trends and use that data that we've received, part of which was from the Education Task Force, the last one. But prior to that, we had our own study in terms of our enrollment to address those. But the last time that I did that, when we looked at high school before the pandemic, because things are a little different with the pandemic, you will see that our secondary enrollment pretty much stayed stable. And much of the drop was at the elementary level.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gatske.
Ms. Morrison?
Dr. Edwards addressed my question. I do think it's important that we understand how many single-family homes are available or land available for single-family homes as opposed to the number of apartment complexes that are being developed. We drove around and looked, and there are a lot of apartments going up. And people tend, at a certain age, to want to move to a single-family home, and they are really available in the county, but not so much in Lynchburg. I think that's an important piece of information.
And the other piece of data, and I don't know that we have it now as accurate as we've had pre-pandemic, is Director Brown and her team used to do the in-and-out report. So, you know, there's always...everybody's leaving and going to private schools. She would give a report up until the pandemic year of how many students were coming in from, you know, various places, the counties, private schools, and how many students were leaving. And again, if you look at the net trend of that, it was not significant in terms of lots of folks leaving the city schools to go to private schools and other places. So, again, that kind of sits with the kindergarten. They're not in our schools and then dissatisfied and leaving in large numbers. We may not be getting the three, four, and five-year-olds who should be coming to us.
All right. Thank you very...very good. Dr. Gupta, then, Mr. Harvey?
I know this demographic variables, if I look back to 2005 report from UVA, was pretty on target. Look at...they predicted we'll have about 8,000 students by 2020, and plus-minus a few hundred here and there, which we have about 7,900. So, the range was pretty accurate. It's 15 years ago. So, hopefully, this will give us a decent projections going forward. But coming back to my question, you said we had to cut out three school buildings and the future of education. How much did we save in that?
If we had...if we had the original estimate for everything we had in our scope was 530,000. So, we were able to save 130,000.
Mr. Harvey?
I just wanted to kind of confirm a little bit of an assumption that I'm going to make. I would agree that I think Heritage and Sandusky, it's not important to conduct field verification and field study for those buildings since they are fairly new. But does that field condition assessment also include some of our other buildings, such as our transportation building, our administration building? Or is it just focused to our schools?
Currently, it's just education and where we conduct. So, we do have in there the Fort Hill Community School and sites like that. But no, we were not able to get the administration building or the facilities and transportation building. And just to be clear, as far as the ones that we did, the Heritage High, Sandusky Middle, and Sandusky Elementary does not mean that they will not appear in the report. This is a 20-year report. We just know that a school that's five years old now should not need anything until about 20 years out, which kind of puts it at the end of this report. But it will be on there that in 20 years, in 2036, it will appear in the report as you need...you're probably going to need to replace your roof. You're probably going to...we just don't need to go through the building to get that information. So...
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, and I could also share with you. I mean, the group that is doing this study also was involved with both of those schools and is pretty intimately familiar with them.
Right.
So, I do...I feel comfortable that we'll get really good information from this study.
Dr. Gupta?
If this contract is awarded, when do we expect the report back from them?
So, the schedule that they have supplied, one of the city...one of the city requests was that they have some...a report back by the fall where they could...we could start using it to develop the CIP for the next few years. We will have that...Dominion Seven has said that we will have that report by, I think, mid-November. The demographic report will be here by winter break. And then the final report will be due or will be presented to the school board and city council sometime in February or March is what we're... They will...Dominion Seven will also be giving a presentation, bringing everybody up to date as far as to the school board sometime in November when they get the facility condition assessment done. So, they're planning on reporting to the school board on two occasions, one in the fall and then the final, and then reporting to the city council after the final report.
Thank you for the questions. So, Chair would remind the board, we can have continued discussion. A motion would certainly be in order with discussion around what is being recommended that we select the firm Dominion Seven Architects for the facility study. It is a pleasure to the board. Mr. Harvey?
I assume so.
Harvey is making the motion. Ms. Morrison is the second that we would select the firm Dominion Seven Architects, Lynchburg, Virginia, a contract of $400,000 to conduct the facility study. There is further discussion on the motion. Want to leave anybody out? Seeing none, then we will call for the roll. If you're voting yes, you're affirming the decision to select Dominion Seven for the said amount. If you vote no, you would not be in favor of the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Member Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Senhai.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, board. That moves us to Section F, Informational Items. Please, as members of the board, we first want to thank Rose and all of the fine people here at EC Glass for allowing this to be a part of our pilgrimage away from our home. And the board may be tired of clapping, but I think we can at least clap one more time for EC Glass. Thank you. Record is so noted.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, please.
I think we need to give a special thanks to the technical staff
Yes.
who assisted us not only here but at Dunbar. This is not an easy thing to go off, and they are here hours before us and hours after us. And we appreciate all that you do so much. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you for that. Ditto, ditto, ditto. And so, we will be returning back home. Dr. Edwards, thank you. August the 3rd, 5:00 p.m. for our administration building. And then on the 17th, you see the said work session. Master board training got off to a good start, and you can see the next date for that. Very quickly, I do want the clerk to help me with this as best we can. As you know, some of you mentioned in master board that the November Annual Convention for V S B A is coming up. The dates are November the 17th through the 19th. And then on the 16th, this is the 115th anniversary of V S B A. So, they're doing something really big, so there'll be no early bird. But that kind of big activity is taking place. You know, you rotate hotels, and that there might be a possibility that we could be in the lodge. If you're planning to go, you may back out later. But if you're planning to go, could you let the clerk know tonight in some kind of way as you're leaving out so that she can go ahead and book those rooms for us? And, you know, you either get to be at the lodge or you have to be somewhere else. That's all I can say on it right now. But it will be...yeah, that's all I will say. So, if you'd like to do that, let her know if you think you're going to the convention. All right? And that takes care of everything I have to say. And unless there's something else that needs to be said, this meeting is adjourned. And that takes care of everything I have to say, and unless there's something else that needs to be said, this meeting is adjourned.